Please join me for the pledge. Thank you. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Wong?
Here.
I understand that Councilmember Shepherd-Rami has an excused absence for today.
Yes.
Councilmember Yudi?
Here.
Vice Mayor Talt?
Present.
Mayor Jacobowski?
Present. The agenda is posted seventy-two hours prior to each regular meeting at the following locations: City Hall, the Crowell Public Library, and the Stoneman Building. The agenda is also posted on the city's website. The city welcomes public input. At this time, the public may address the city council on items that are not on the agenda. Pursuant to state law, the city council may not discuss or take action on issues not on the meeting agenda. Please note that all comments are limited to two minutes and will be timed by city staff. I would now like to ask City Clerk Baker to explain how public comment will work.
Thank you, Mayor. For each item on the agenda, there will be time for public comment. We'll accept comments in three ways. First, we will take in-person comments for each item. Please fill out a speaker card and turn it to me if you would like, if you'd wish to speak on an item. There is a count-on timer to the left of the public microphone to help speakers keep track of the remaining time to speak. Next, we will then ask for comments from our Zoom participants. When we ask for public comments via Zoom, there are two ways you can let us know you would like to speak. First, you can use the raised hand feature, which is a button that's found by clicking on Participants, and then clicking on Raised Hand on the bottom right side of the screen. Please do not use this feature until we have asked for public comment, or else we may not see it or know which item you are asking to speak on. As a second option, you can send a message using the chat box saying you would like to speak on this particular agenda item. Comments will be accepted only until the end of the public comment period for that item. Finally, I will then read into the record any public comments received by email for that particular item. Due to technical limitations associated with gathering, printing, and sorting emailed public comment, the city has instituted a 3:00 PM cutoff the day before Friday city council meetings for emailed public comments. This is to ensure there is sufficient time to gather and present the emailed comments at the city council meeting. Any comments received after 3:00 PM the day before his Friday city council meeting will be included in the public comment record but will not be read at the meeting. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Is there anyone here who wishes to speak at this time?
Yes.
Mr.? Yes. Good morning. Should you desire, please give us your name and address.
Hi, my name is Alan and I live at Roxbury Row, 980 Roxbury Row. I just like to make a comment on the progress on my renovation application. And then I submitted back in November last year, and there's zero progress made since. I can give a brief timeline. I submitted the application back in November 2021. And I sent my email to check the application status every second. Then I had an in-person visit on the application status on the city council hall back in April 2022. And then I emailed again on May 3, 2022. And then there's no... No reply, or you know, or just like, like... And basically, no replies really late. So I understand that, and you know, the city planning commission is very show-staffed, but I believe this kind of quality of service that provide to San Marino residents is not acceptable, and it's very frustrating. So I just like to, you know, to urge the city council, you know, to either hire, to increase the budget for hiring more staff planning commissions, or, you know, we can just also hire outside firms to review those applications. You know, I even heard from an architect that some backlog application back to one and a half year ago, you know. So I just want to make this comment and that city council knows.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
We appreciate that. Is there anybody online who wishes to take, take public comment?
Let me give just one moment to see if there's any raised hands. I'm not seeing any raised hands for public comment from Zoom. I did, we did receive one email yesterday that's for general public comment. It was from Ms. C.U.N. Leo requesting additional support of staff and the city manager from the city council. And that's just a summary of it because I was able to previously distribute it to both council and the community. And that is all I received for general public comment for today.
Thank you very much. Moving on to new business, item number one: Appointment of members to the Planning Commission Design Review Committee, Library Board of Trustees, and Public Safety Commission. May we please have a presentation from City Clerk Baker?
Yes, thank you, Mayor, and council members. The city council has established five advisory bodies to assist the council on various areas. Each, each year, an advisory body recruitment is held for terms ending that year. This year, there were terms ending for the Planning Commission, Design Review Committee, the Library Board of Trustees, and the Public Safety Commission. The city had a successful recruitment process and received more applications than what was needed for the positions that need to be filled. The council liaisons for each advisory body reviewed applications and held interviews, which have resulted in recommendations for each of the advisory bodies. For the Planning Commission, the council liaisons, Mayor Jacobowski and Councilmember Wong, are recommending Ms. Shelley Boyle and Mr. John Destin be reappointed as full members. And then, and new, excuse me, and Mr. Ching Chow will be appointed as an alternate member. For the Design Review Committee, council liaisons, Councilmember Shepherd-Rami and Vice Mayor Talt are recommending Mr. Raymond Chang, Ms. Sharon McKay, and Ms. Joyce Gatzulis-Batnich be reappointed as full members, and Mr. Tony Chow will be reappointed as an alternate member. For the Library Board of Trustees, council liaisons, Councilmember Yudi and Vice Mayor Talt are recommending Ms. Deborah Seddon and Ms. Kathy Osagueda be appointed as full members, and Ms. Sandy Chow and Ms. Vivy Wall be appointed as alternate members. For the Public Safety Commission, council liaisons, Mayor Jacobowski and Vice Mayor Talt are recommending Mr. Jeffrey Buzel and Mr. Hunter Chang be reappointed as full members, Ms. Elizabeth Pfeffer be appointed as a full member, and Mr. Charles Mortenson be appointed as a full member to complete the term that was recently made vacant that ends on May 31, 2024. That completes my staff report. I'm available for any questions.
Thank you. Councilmembers, any question? Councilmember Wong?
No, no questions.
Councilmember Yudi?
No questions.
Vice Mayor Talt?
No questions.
I have no questions. At this time, I'd like to open this up for public comment. Is there anybody wishing to speak on this item?
Let me give a moment to see if there's any Zoom participants. No, no request for comment on this item.
Okay, I will bring this back to council for any question or any additional comments. Councilmembers, anything further?
I do, I just have to say that for the three of these that I participated in, we had some very, very qualified candidates. And this was not an easy decision on the three that, that, that I went through. And we find that when we make an effort to go out and find help, people are there, they're qualified to help us. And I appreciate that those that applied maybe did not get a position this time around, and those that applied and did get it. But it was, it was... It made me feel good that we have those quality candidates out there.
Well said, Vice Mayor. Thank you. And we do appreciate everyone who applied, and thank you, City Clerk, for facilitating this lengthy process.
Yes, thank you. And for getting all these names correct.
Do I have a motion at this time?
Can we move to accept what City Clerk Baker read?
Yes.
That sounds, that sounds great. And is there a second? Okay, roll call, please.
Sorry. Councilmember Wong?
Yes.
Councilmember Yudi?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Talt?
Yes.
Mayor Jacobowski?
Yes, thank you.
Motion passes.
And congratulations to all of those who will continue or be joining us. Item number two: Presentation and Adoption of the Post-Operating Budget. May we have opening remarks from City Manager Marlowe and Director Chung, please?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. Good morning, everybody. We are here, fingers crossed, for the final budget meeting of the cycle for this year. This is a long process. We appreciate everybody's time and patience. That goes for staff and for council. You sit through many, many meetings where we ask you for your ideas. We ask you to vote on your own ideas, and then we bring you back our own ideas, and then you comment on those, and then we come back. And here we are finally for the final budget adoption. This is the presentation of our operating capital budget. There should be no surprises in here for you today. Finance Director Chung will go through the presentation and will show you that everything that you have in your budget presented to you here this morning are items that were either visible to you previously or are changes that were specifically directed by you. The only exception to that was a change that was philosophically requested by you, which is the staffing increase in community development. At one of our previous meetings, you asked us to go back and look. You've heard comments much like the gentleman who spoke earlier today. There is indeed a having already grown and continuing to grow frustration in the community with the lack of staffing in the Community Development Department, which has resulted in a significant backlog, as again you heard here today on the caseload. I must tell you, having worked in five cities over the course of my career, virtually every non-sworn function in department we have here is understaffed. But I think our staff does an exceptional job of pulling together and trying to be sure that all gaps are filled and everybody steps up to the table. Unfortunately, sometimes it turns into a bit of a house of cards, and when one thread pulls, many things collapse. And indeed, that is what happened to the Community Development Department over the last six to eight months with the vacancies, with the turnover of staff, moving on to other opportunities. We found ourselves in a position where we just simply couldn't keep up with the workload. And given the additional demands in the entire industry, we also were unable to find contracts assistance. We have finally successfully managed to do that, thanks to Director Figueroa, and we are slowly trying to get back up to speed. But in response to your request, we did a lot of thinking and we brainstormed a lot of ideas, and we came up with a proposal for you here today. So everything else in the budget is something that you have explicitly seen before or directed. That is the one thing that we are here to present to you today, which is why you see Director Figueroa joining us here at the Table of Honor. And so he has some comments for you. As it's turned out, we sadly have heard from many people, like the gentleman here today, who have been very frustrated. And as we have shared with them, the staffing issues, there has been something of a surprising groundswell of support for additional staff in the department. Additional staffing is, is complicated in San Marino. We try very hard to not propose additional full-time employees because of the impact that has on the city for, you know, potentially all time to come. But this seemed like an exceptional situation. We appreciate the support from the community, and we hope that you are happy with the proposal that we have for you today. So finally, just specific thank yous to the Budget and Finance Liaisons. I'm sure that the Finance Director will be thanking you himself. We appreciate all the time that you spend with us, the council as a whole, the executive team, all of the people who support the executive team in putting this together, and of course, Finance Director Paul Chung and his staff. This has been yet another relatively easy year under Director Chung's leadership on the budget process. So thank you very much, and I'm happy to turn over to you.
Thank you, City Manager, and thank you so much, councilmembers. This morning, I'll be presenting the 2223 Operating and CIP Budget. But before I begin, I really wanted to send my thank yous to, of course, the mayor and the vice mayor and city council members. I know this is a big time drain for you, but also it's, it's such an important document, as you know. It's, it's our spending plan for next year for the residences in the community. And it takes several amount of time, as you know, it started back in January, and here we are in May for your consideration of the budget. So I just really want to express your thank yous to you for your time. Also, of course, the Finance Liaisons, I really appreciate your time and really your recommendations in improving the processes. This is my third budget here in San Marino, and, and I can speak for myself that we've improved the process and taken such great steps forward. So I really appreciate your time and dedication to this process. City Manager, of course, her leadership in this budget process, even though easy was the word she used. I think it's always a challenging budget every year, especially with COVID-2 and all the other items going on with the city regards to challenges, but also areas of interest. So I really appreciate her leadership there. Also, I have Annie on the call, the city treasurer. Her and I always meet once a month at least, and we talk about the finances and also the budget. So I really appreciate her time, too. Of course, my team, my finance department, Mark Siegfried, our accounting manager, Lisa Carlson, and Diana Molina, our account clerk. They've also been really involved in this budget process this year, so I really want to appreciate their time. Also, I wanted to thank Nicole Codris, our Community Development Engagement Manager, and Christina Baker. They really put in their time this year to what we call beautify our budget. It looks, you will see it in our budget that it's professional. We've, you, we've updated quite a bit of the budget to mirror what other cities might spend. An army of budget analysts to pack, package, and the two of them really spent quite a time to just package what's, what's before you. And so I really want to appreciate their time and efforts in this process. And lastly, of course, the department heads and their analysts, they put in a lot of time, as City Manager mentioned, our meetings together are long, thorough, a lot of back and forth, every dollar we consider. So I just really want to say thank you for their time as well. And so with that said, let me begin my presentation hopefully shorter than my introduction here. Regardless of our budget meeting from back in April, the real changes that was made are on the revenue side. The Home for the Holidays, we took that revenue piece out. Also, the ARPA money that was currently sitting in this fiscal year, we actually moved that to next fiscal year, being that most of the expenditures are still being considered. So we decided to move that revenue to next year. On the expenditure side, we also took out the Home for the Holidays expense. And also what we added back in is the Community Development asks for staffing and also the contract work that was requested. So I'll cover that in a little bit. If we could go to the next slide, please. So the budget this, for next year is a balanced budget on our general fund, which is majority of our expenditures and our revenues. Our revenues are looking at $34.2 million for next year. That will be the highest revenues that the city is anticipating next year historically. On the expenditure end, you're looking at $30.1 million on expenditures. Just wanted to preface that that does not, of course, include the meet and confer process that we're currently in. And from that outcome, I will be coming back to the city council in a future meeting for that budget appropriation regards to the MOU agreements. Net income overall will be close to $4 million for next year for our surplus of cash that's anticipated for next year. If we go to the next slide. Just wanted to show the council the historic net income. As you can see, it continues to grow. Our revenue will grow next year because of the big ARPA funding that's still coming in. I believe it will come in July 1st, the last portion of the ARPA funds. And our expenditure, as I mentioned, should be 30 million. So we're looking at $4.1 million of surplus next year. If you look at this fiscal year and next fiscal year, close to $9.1 million of additional surplus that the city has, should have by next year. So overall, our fiscal condition remains healthy for next year as well. If you could go to the next slide. Just wanted to show the total budget, not only the general fund operating budget side, but total revenues and total expenditures, which includes the restricted funding as well. So total revenues for the budget next year is $36.8 million. And as I mentioned, that would be the highest historic revenues that the city will collect next year. On the expenditure side, it's $46.7 million. And of that $46.7 million, $31, $30.1 million, the operating budget, and then $16.6 million is the CIP budget. That's $16.6 million, $10 million of that is new CIP construction. And then the $5 million is CIP projects that are going to roll or get re-approached to next year to finish up the remaining projects from this year. That's, so let's go to the next slide. As I mentioned earlier, we did add, per the request from the council, some budget proposals for the Community Development Department, being that there is a big need there. So what we did was we added additional positions into the budget: a assistant planner position, a permit technician, a upgrade for a management analyst from a part-time to a full-time. And then lastly, contract services for some, for the urban tree planning, plant, urban foresters, our urban forester services that we, that's required on the planning side. So that total that we added to the budget is $323,000. And, and I'll turn it over to Director Figueroa to provide additional details regards to these positions.
Thank you, Director Chung. As directed by the council, staff conducted extensive research to outline and determine the number of personnel changes that would need to be made in order to address the existing and forecast their workload. And the following positions were determined to be necessary. The Assistant Planner, which would mainly focus on processing the ADU applications, which have gone over 633% since 2019. Now, 2019, the reason we chose that was because that was the non, the last non-COVID year. The Assistant Planner would also oversee the 510 over-the-counter applications and be the main staff resource for building and safety. Staff is also proposing a permit technician. Now, the permit technician would be the person that greets the general public at the counter. Not only would they be the general public point for community development, but for the entire, for all the other city departments. They would administer the administrative processing permits. In terms of building permits, they've gone up over 101% since 2019. Over 122% increase in certificate of compliance since 2019 as well. Next slide, please. Staff is also asking for a management analyst to be converted from part-time to full-time. During, during Director Chung's comments, he indicated that all the department heads had the assistance of the management analysts for this budget process. Unfortunately, community development does not have a management analyst. So it's, obviously, it would take all of our resources from current staff to, to analyze the budget, and hopefully, we would have a person that could concentrate on that also to assist with the program coordination. Currently, the tree preservation ordinance takes a lot of staff resources. Also, once we hopefully get additional staff resources, we'll come back to you and look at what our economic development strategy is going to be, and that person will be instrumental in that. And then in terms of the arborist, we looked at that position, and we just don't feel there's enough work to warrant a full-time position. So we think a contract arborist would assist the current, or once we have an or forest or position filled, which would offer a boutique service to our residents. It would also offer technical support to court enforcement and to planning during public hearings. Now, the full-time positions, and I think this is a key fact, for the full-time positions, these are entry-level positions. So typically, the person who holds that position will hold it for about two to three years. As all of you are aware, we're currently filling the vacant assistant planner position. And the city has gone through three assistant planners in the last five years. And why I think that's important is because as vacancies come, we can take, we can take a look at that position, analyze it, and see if there's a need for it in the future. As I mentioned before in the previous staff meeting on, or in the previous budget workshop on April 22nd, I, the department feels that for the next five years, we're going to need these positions to be filled. We don't know what else the state is going to throw at us. And then based on our current, based on our current workload, I feel these five, these positions that we're asking for are adequate. We might need more, but at least these, you know, we can address the current workload and the expected workload. And again, if we have vacancies, we can take a look at those vacancies and see if we, and reassess whether we still need that position or not. That concludes my presentation. And on behalf of the Community Development Department, and I really mean this, all of them really would like to thank you for considering these positions. It would really help them out a lot if we can get these additional positions to address the current and the forecast workload. Thank you.
Thank you each for your presentations. I'm sorry, Director Chung, is there more you'd like to add?
I do have just one last slide for you.
Sure.
Could you go to the last slide, please? So as I mentioned, we have a balanced budget. Next year's budget, regardless of the FTE, as Director Figueroa mentioned, we're, we're requesting for additional bodies. It'll be 3.0 FTEs, because there's that additional .5 senior planner that's already, was included in the 27th Budget Study Session Meeting. Also, aquatics, as it's coming in-house, excited for that program. I know our director, Community Services Director, mentioned that there was a big demand for that, and people are excited for that program to come back in-house. So we have that 2.22 bodies, and then .04 for that park attendance, so total 5.26. But to just give you some additional context regards to FTE bodies, even though it seems like a big jump, 5.26, we're actually, back in 1819, we had a total FT of 136. In 1920, we had a whole total of 139. And with these additional 5.26 budget for next year, we'll be at a total of 133 FTE. So we'll still be historically lower than we were in 1819 or 1920. Just wanted to add that context for you. To conclude, areas of interest going into next year, as I mentioned, we're still in the labor negotiations process with our associations. Inflation, as you know, is still a moving target. We just don't know what it's going to look like a year, maybe two years. And lastly, COVID-19, as you're aware, as cases just increase or decrease, we don't know the after-effects of the COVID-19 economic impacts. So we're still closely looking at that. And as I mentioned, the ARPA monies, we still have that money coming in, in April, in July. With that said, that concludes my presentation. Thank you.
Thank you each. Very helpful and detailed. Question from council, Councilmember Yudi?
Have you been involved in the process? I do not have any questions, but I will have some, some comments when I get to that section.
Great, thank you. Councilmember Wong?
Yes, I have a question. So you, you mentioned about the management analyst. So who's greeting at the desk right now? If she, I think you said that this new position is going to be greeting the general public at the desk, right?
For, for that particular aspect, it would be the permit technician, which we don't have one, right? What we, the third one, we don't have. The management analyst currently is vacant, that position is vacant. And that currently is a part-time position.
Excellent. Okay, no more question. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Vice Mayor Talt?
Yeah, there was just one area that, that I didn't quite understand. Do you plan on, with respect to these, these new people in the community development area, do you plan in rolling them in or folding them in? Meaning that if you find out that two are sufficient, and maybe we don't need that, that third extra one? Or are you going to go out and hire them all at the same time?
Currently, we would hire all of them at the same time. We need them. I, I think the idea is, though, as, again, these are entry-level positions. So we know that the turnover is going to be there. We know that in two, three years, one of them is going to go either within the city or outside the city to go to the next level. And at that time, we can reassess and say, do we really need this position? Or do, based on, based on our forecast, we feel that for the next five years, we're going to need these positions.
Thank you.
Anything else?
No.
Okay. Just a few quick questions. I know you, I've seen some of this in projections. With our housing element, can you take us from the number of applications for ADUs, say, last year? What is projected either by fiscal or calendar year for this year? And if you can take us two years out, because we know those are ministerial, we know that they have a timeframe on those, a timeline where they have to be completed. Could you just speak to that for one moment?
Unfortunately, I don't have last year's number. I know that in 2019, we only had six. I believe last year, we had a number of, I believe it was somewhere in, in the 30s. And we're projecting this year will be 66.
So that assistant planner, along with other duties, would really be working with those ADUs?
Not only that, but even before we get the application, there's a lot of coordination with either the property owner or the, or the representative. And that takes a lot of time. There's also research that goes into it. You know, in some cases, the easements, their trees, so we got to coordinate with that. So there's a lot of coordination prior to, to a submitted, application submitted.
You're a one-stop planning commission?
Pretty much.
Yeah, because there are the tree issues, the matching, the roof, the finish on the property, the...
And on top of that, we have a stringent timeline in which we have to review and approve an application.
Okay. And do you personally expect more state legislation? I'm sure you follow what's going on with regard to taking an interest in our city's housing?
I, I think our city attorney can attest to this. Not, not only do I forecast that there will be, we, we don't even know what else they're thinking about as well. So I...
We don't know what they've thought about. We don't know what they've thought about.
Right.
I, I've been following some of the pending legislation and I'm sure a number of those will, will continue to move forward. And I think I had, oh, and just to reiterate, on the aquatics positions, it was very nice to see that quickly promoted through the city's website and constant contact. Those indeed are year-round positions, correct?
No, they should be seasonal.
So if you're calling them two point two two FTE, how does that translate out budget-wise?
Budget-wise, we, I don't know the exact amount total, but on the FTE two point two two, it was close to a hundred and forty-three thousand dollars. Like, that's the number that kind of rings in my mind. When we came to council room back in February to ask for the aquatics to come back in-house, we had that breakout regards to the various positions, and I believe it was a cost of a hundred and forty-three thousand.
And I guess I'm not stating my, my question correctly.
Sorry.
No, no, it's my, my bad. The three point oh, that's community development year-round. And the point zero four park attendant, that's year-round. So with the two point two two aquatics, the others are noted as year-round. How do we interpret that?
I, I think, I, I think I got your answer, question, Mayor. The part, it's all part-time positions. And the way we calculate part-time positions are the amount of hours that there, we're expecting them to work. So that's how we get that two point two two.
Yes, on an annual basis. Got it. Thank you so much. I appreciate that, and I have no further questions.
I just have one question. I'm looking at the summary of authors, authorized positions, page seventy-eight to four seventy-two. You said that, I thought, I heard you say there was a hundred and thirty-three, there's actually a hundred and thirty-four full-time equivalents, unless something dropped out that I'm not familiar with. You see on seventy-eight to four seventy-two?
Yes. I might, I, I did the calculation with my back of a napkin calculation. So this morning, when I wanted to provide you that data, so it could have been one thirty-four, not one thirty-three, I probably misspoke. But you are absolutely.
Still under what we have.
Yes, and this, this part of the budget does break out exactly the positions that we've had. And it's just, I misspoke, it was a hundred and thirty-four positions.
Thank you.
Yes.
And to answer my question, at the lower left-hand part of that page, there's all those part-timers that are eating, adding up to those full-time.
Yeah, we always provide that data in our budget.
Really thorough. Thank you so much. At this point, I'd like to open up for public comments. Do we have any comments on the budget?
Yes. One, two. Mr. Dustin, you can go ahead.
Thank you. First, I just wanted to thank Mayor Jacobowski and Vice Mayor Tolton, the, the council, for their vote of confidence in me this morning. I just wanted to strongly provide my support for this request for increased resources in the community development department. You know, as a commissioner on the planning commission, it is vital that we have these resources available. I'm just going to give you an example of what I consider to be just sort of a routine item that has been left unattended. And this in no way is a reflection on the planning department staff. They have performed admirably and heroically, given the resources that they have. But we have not had regularly produced minutes for the planning commission since April of two thousand seventeen. As a commissioner, I can tell you that is problematic, because it makes it difficult for me to go back and quickly find how votes went on items in the past, and I would imagine it's very frustrating for residents. I also have a concern that since minutes are the official legal record of what happens in our meetings, does that expose the city to any level of risk? I know we record the meetings on Zoom and there's audio and video recordings available of the meetings, but that's not the same as having minutes. So that's just one example of, you know, tasks that really need to be attended to. And I cannot tell you how impressed I have been with staff up to this point handling the load, but they really need the help. So I strongly urge you to accept their recommendation. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Dustin.
Okay, we have another one. Ms. Lightner?
Hi, good morning to the council. I spoke in a meeting previously, and I'm very grateful that the budget issues with the community planning department have been raised. I think I just wanted to echo everything that's been said here, that the staff who are there, you're doing an amazing job with very limited resources. And they really, they need this, and it's not fair for them to constantly have to deal with frustration from, from residents when, when they're doing their best. And it's, it's an untenable situation that I think, you know, hopefully, the, the budget has shown there's, there's, there's clear reasons and there's, there's, you know, this is just the adequate minimum that will be needed to help bring things back to a normal level. And I'd just like to say I support the budget proposal.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Anyone additional?
I'm not seeing any other raised hands. We did however receive quite a few letters from, let me just read my notes, so I say this correctly. And we received public comment from thirty-five residents supporting the community development director's request for additional budget to hire additional staff. And these came in various letters signed, some of them signed by multiple people. And I was also able to distribute these to council and the community prior to the meeting. But they were all within the same vein, supporting the director's request.
Thank you. And sir, did you have something additional to say on this item?
I'm, I'm an engineering background, so you know, I think the most important thing in engineering is, is people. You know, you can have all the technology, you know, intellectual property patents, but most importantly, you need people. So I'm supporting the planning commission to hire more people to address the backlog. Yeah, that's just.
Thank you again. Thank you. Does that do it on our public comment?
Yes, that's all the public.
Thank you very much. At this time, I'd like to bring the item back to council for discussion. Any comments, questions, council member Udi?
Um, yeah, I mean, I, I think I'm going to say the obvious, you know, to, to Paul and to Mark and Lisa and Diana. Thank you for the, for, for the hard, hard work here and for keeping, working on improving the process and, and as department managers and staff as well, this is, this is a lot of heavy lifting. But I think the, the, the process has led to a great product. I mean, I think the quality of the product and the thoroughness and completeness of it and the thought process that went through is just spectacular. And the department by department to have the, the purpose, the description, the accomplishments from last year, what the objectives are for this year, what the, you know, financial resources are required to, you know, satisfy those objectives. I mean, it's just a completely, you know, open book and full transparency. So, so thank you. And I think that, you know, this hard work and effort also leads to, you know, the, the financial stability of the community, but that's reflected in the clean audits that you've had the last, what, four years? So I'm, I'm, I'm very optimistic that this process and this product again will lead to another clean audit for this next fiscal years. I just want to say thank you to everybody.
Thank you. Council member Huang?
Yes, I concur. You know, thank you to Director Chan and your department and all this hard work. And let's not forget that we also need to thank taxpayers hardworking for paying their taxes, so we can have all this money for our budget. And Mike can also, you know, support the additional manpower that we need in, in the building and planning department, because I was once in their shoes, so I understand how they feel, you know, their frustration. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Vice Mayor Tom?
Well, I concur in the, the thank yous. I know everybody works hard and, and really, the, as I've said before, the difference between what the product we see now and the product we saw when we first started is, is substantial on the good side. So thank you very much. We do have to be careful, however, because there's a substantial percentage of our funds, our revenues this year that are one-time funds. And that's the American Rescue Plan Fund. So when we get to making the comparison next year, we have to be very careful that this is not money necessarily that's going to come every year. So although we may be flushed with these funds this year, we have to be very, very careful as to, as to how we use them and remind ourselves. And what is it, it's like eight percent of the revenues that are, that are, that are one-time funds this year in American Rescue. So let's be careful. Secondly, I'm usually very cautious about hiring new people. But having heard from the community and in our, in our interview process with the design review commission, one thing that we asked, because they were all repeats, we asked them what, how would you improve? And, and to a person, each interviewee said that, that, that they need more staff, that they're really, they're really struggling. But I, so I can support the staff, but I want to be very careful also that we make sure that we're using them as effectively as possible. And, and, and that we, we're using them in the ways the community wants us to use, and that's to get the product out and to respond to their, their requests. So I appreciate it. I could support the budget. Thank you.
Thank you. I, I, I too, in joining council member Udi, I'm just delighted with the year-over-year progress in making this so easily digested. It is almost come down to a template, which I might recommend for the future. I know you, Paul, and your staff worked very hard on this, and it is most appreciated. As far as the community development department positions, as I look at them, most of them will be generating income that is coming in through fees. But the most important issue, and I'm hearing it as being the number one issue in the community right now, it will give the community more peace. I have to confess, I dread coming into the lobby during business hours, because there are just so, so many bodies there. And I hear the way the people coming in are being spoken to and staff, despite being just so overloaded, is very gracious to each of them. So we appreciate the work of the entire department. And thank you for your preparation, Director Figaro, you're quite new, and we appreciate all that you've done. Great. Hearing nothing further, do I have a motion?
I move to approve resolution number R dash twenty-two dash twenty-two, adopting the operating and capital budget for fiscal year twenty twenty-two to twenty twenty-three and appropriating the amount specified therein from the funds and for the purposes indicated.
Thank you.
Second.
And second by council member Huang. Roll call, please.
Council member Huang?
Yes.
Council member Udi?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Tolt?
Yes.
Mayor Jacobowski?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you very much. Okay, we move on to item number three, approval of resolution establishing appropriation limits. May we please have a presentation from Director Chung?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. Thank you, City Council. The staff report before you is to approve resolution number R twenty-two dash twenty-three, establishing again appropriations limit and appropriation subject to the limitations for fiscal year twenty-two, twenty-three. The resolution is part of the annual budget adoption process and the last piece in finalizing the budget for next year. The GAN appropriation sets the spending limit for the annual budget appropriations of tax proceeds for California agencies. The limit is calculated through a complex formula, that includes inflationary changes and population growth. The goal of the limit is to make sure agencies set their budgets appropriately and that agencies are not over-collecting taxes from the community. The proposed fiscal year twenty-two, twenty-three appropriations limit is thirty-two million, thirty-four thousand, nine hundred and seventy-one dollars. And I'm happy to report to the council that our proposed budget appropriations, subject to the limit for next year, is twenty-one million, a hundred and ten thousand, five hundred and eighty-six dollars, or sixty-six percent of the maximum that's allowed. What this means is that our expenditures next year are well below the limit that are, that our expenditures are under control. This concludes my presentation. I'm available for any questions. Thank you.
Thank you. Questions, council member Huang?
No, no question, thank you.
Council member Udi?
No questions, thank you.
Vice Mayor Tom?
No questions.
And I have no questions. Is there anyone from the public wishing to speak on this item?
Let me give just a moment for any raised hands to come through. No, there are no requests for comment on this item.
Thank you. Bringing this back to council, anyone have anything further on this item? See, seeing none, do I have a motion, please?
I move to approve resolution number R dash twenty-two dash twenty-three, establishing the appropriations limit and appropriation subject to limitation for fiscal year two thousand twenty-two to two thousand twenty-three.
Second.
I'll second.
Thank you. Roll call.
Council member Huang?
Yes.
Council member Udi?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Tolt?
Yes.
Mayor Jacobowski?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you. Moving on to written communications or public writings, do any of my colleagues have anything they wish to share? I would like to joyfully share that the San Marino Chinese Club Chinese School had their end-of-year ceremony last week. And city manager Marlo, a student, and councilwoman Shepard Romey, also a student, demonstrated their proficiency in a lovely way before a very large group. And I was asked to give opening comments, and we're just so delighted that this group continues to be a presence in our community after so many years and is enjoying good attendance. Public comments, do we have any public comments from anyone out there?
Not seeing any raised hands, no requests for comment on this.
Thank you. Moving to future agenda items, anything my colleagues would like to see on a future agenda? Seeing none, do any council members have a special adjournment that you have today? Okay, with that, I will close the meeting. Thank you.